March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, open public meeting, the Needham Library Board of Trustees, being held via remote format. A roll call, I'll take a roll call, confirm that all the trustees and library staff anticipated beyond the agenda are present and can hear me. So trustees, Vice Chair Anna Geraldo Care.
Here.
Secretary Jay Fialkov.
Here.
Tom Harkins.
Here.
Carol Thomas.
Here.
Bob Pettit.
Here.
Airheart Grave.
Here.
And myself KK Hill. Here. Okay, among the library staff, we have Director Kim Hewitt.
Here.
Assistant Director Dimitri Kiriakas.
Here.
Technology Specialist Danielle Tawa.
Here.
We also have Jenna Davis.
I'm sorry Jenna White.
Jenna White, I'm sorry, I don't know where the Davis came from, Jenna White. And we have other staff, oh, and Faith Chrisley, or faithful Faith Chrisley.
Here.
Great, this meeting is being recorded, is there, there is a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at seven P M. That would be April, I think, who's the date? The April meeting, that I forgot to look up, wait one sec.
It will be April twelfth because of the election.
April twelfth.
Kay, did we, did we, I didn't hear Joan's name, I'm not sure.
Oh, Joan Smith, yes. Okay, yeah, so we reconvene on April twelfth, if there's any problem. So all in favor of calling the meeting to order, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll oppose.
Aye.
Okay, we're called to order.
Here's a question.
Yeah.
April twelfth, that's a Tuesday, right, a Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, the day after the election.
And if we continue that meeting, I will know about, Carol and I will no longer be on, on the board.
You just gotta throw a monkey wrench into the works, so. Well, we could name a different date in that case that happens before the election, okay? So why don't I pick the last Tuesday before that, which would be, look at my. April fourth. We would reconvene on April fourth. Okay. Good point, Tom. So, okay, so our first item.
And we, we should also, in that regard, look, I looked at the attendees and I noticed that Megan Small is, 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 is there too, so hello Megan.
So on our list of attendees. Yes, I see Megan, that's great, hello Megan, and. Okay, and we also have Veronica is on our list of attendees. So, okay. All right, so for our public comment session at this time, if we have citizens who are welcome to speak for up to three minutes, not to exceed a total ten minutes. Citizens are encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. Those who provide advance notice will be called upon first, citizens must appear generally in person, but since we're fully remote. Tonight, we'll take remote speakers if they so choose, Anna is not a public member of the public, but.
Just a point of clarification, since we changed the date from the twelfth to the fourth, do we have to vote again? Or not?
Uh.
You voted on the twelve.
If we, if you would like us to vote again, we can vote again.
I am just trying to make sure that we are following what we need to follow.
Does do, how do people feel, feel, people feel like we need to vote again?
I think procedurally that would make sense.
Okay. So we'll have a second call to order vote, this time if we, if there's some technological problem that ends this meeting, we will reconvene. On April fourth, Tuesday, April fourth, all in favor of calling a meeting to order, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, unanimously called to order. So the public comment session. Is there any member of the public who chooses to speak tonight? I don't hear any, so in that case, we'll move on to the minutes. Of the February fourteenth meeting, does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Okay, so we accept, so in that case, I will call for a. A motion to accept the minutes of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Airheart, Airheart has a question.
I had amendments, sorry.
Oh, you did have amendments, I didn't see your hand up, okay.
Yes, it's hard to jump in, you know, getting used to.
Yeah, I know, I had to get back used to looking for all the hands being raised, and yes, air.
So there was one thing. I noticed, which was about a question that I had asked regarding to the diversity audit from Baker and Taylor, so this is on page two. The second paragraph down on that page, where it says, Kim noted the Friends of the Needham Public Library. Focus seeing that. So. I just wanted to include the information there that, about what I asked, and what we're going to be doing there, because I think it was important for us to track. So it says, in answer to Airheart's question, and then I was going to add a question about whether we can tailor the parameters of the diversity audit to our goals. And then Kim noted that, and here's an addition, they will give us an audit using their categories, and then it will be up to us to review the data and make decisions moving forward.
So, checking with Kim too, since there's an edit to what Kim's, Kim's response, Kim, are you? Okay with that edit?
Yeah. That sounds good to me.
And Airheart, do you mind just dropping it in the chat, and then I'll take it down verbatim?
Sure.
Would that be okay?
I'll put the full sentence.
Because I got the first part, and that way I don't have to ask you to repeat, if you don't mind.
Right, that's in there.
Thank you. Do you have others, Airheart?
I think there was one other nitpicky thing.
Always good.
Yeah, I think it's on page five, under the section for goal to discussion. There's a sentence about halfway through that paragraph that reads, another recommendations to install, I think that's meant to be another recommendation is to install twenty-four smart lockers.
Hey, have you found that spot?
I'm sorry, Airheart, which paragraph are you in?
No worries, it's on page five. Yeah. On the section goal to discussion.
Okay.
And there's a sentence about halfway through that paragraph, that reads, another recommendations to install, and I think it's meant to say, another recommendation is to install. Okay.
Yes, I got it, thanks.
Should it not be twenty-four hour? Lockers, not twenty-four lockers?
Twenty-four hour, yes.
Good catch, Carol. Okay, so do, is that it for you, Airheart, on your changes, thank you for those. And do other people have any changes to the minutes? No? Okay, good, then. Did I ask for a motion to approve the minutes yet, I don't think I did.
I did, I moved, but I.
Oh, you moved.
I withdraw that one, I, I move to accept these minutes as amended.
And we have a second?
Second.
Um, seconded, and all in favor of accepting the minutes of February twenty-fourteenth meeting, fourteenth meeting, say aye.
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 All opposed? Passed unanimously, great.
I, I think you were supposed to do roll call.
I was gonna say.
For the minutes?
For any, any of these votes. For, for anything when with, when with.
When we're remote, it always has to be roll call?
And I think, Kate, my understanding, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just, is that because we're on Zoom, you have to do a vote where you'd call each person so that it's noted, because otherwise we can't. Tell, but I, in other words, just do it so that we know it's, each person has had a chance.
Okay.
So they're heard.
I'll do a roll call, let me see, when we used to do this, I had a list of everybody's names, but I'll just wing it now, okay, so all in favor, let's see, okay, Tom?
Aye.
Airheart?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And me, aye. Hey, all, I guess we don't have to do all opposed, so, okay, so passed unanimously, good. So we'll do all votes by roll call tonight. Okay, so now the director's report, Kim, just back from Arizona.
Okay, so we've got quite a bit of stuff in here, staff day is on the thirty-first, so that's coming up pretty soon, hope to see all of you for lunch. And, you know, hopefully we'll get the lunch orders right, but we have to do platters, so I, I would just caution that if you had a specialty thing, we're gonna let them know that, I'm not sure how that'll go. Last Thursday, on March ninth, Sarah Breen, Veronica McCarthy, and Rand Cronin participated in the twenty-three trivia B. With three trustees, Carol, Airheart, and Kay, and of course, Tom was there, but he didn't participate on our team. And then.
Time to get rid of him as a trustee. You won't have me to kick around anymore.
Um, we had new slat walls installed in the children's room on several of the shelving structures to provide kind of nicer end caps, so that we can actually display books. Which is a very big, kind of just increase to the visual appeal of the room. And a really big thank you to Angel and his team for coming together to make that happen very quickly, once they arrived, we're just, I think they look great. I hope you're able to see the photo of them, and for people who haven't yet, my director's report will be. You know, with the documents from this meeting, which has some pictures in it, or better yet, stop by and see them. Veronica also recently just started, restarted the Girls Who Code Club, this is the first time we've been running the program since COVID started. We have eight girls participating, plus two teen leaders, and it runs through March, Hometown Weekly had a really nice write-up about it, they took some photos, stopped by and visited during the, the first meeting. And we're just really happy to see that, both because it deserves the credit, but also that Hometown Weekly is, you know, trying to pick up some of the pieces and is featuring the library a lot. So hopefully you all got to see it as well, the children's department hosted a West African dance workshop and Valentine's craft activities in February, both of which had a lot of great attendance. We had some passive Valentine's activities in the children's room, which Anthei had created, which was lovely. Basically, children were able to just fill out paper hearts and return them at the desk, we also participated in a similar program type of thing from NBLC, where they have a Valentine's card that you can print out. And have people fill out, and then you send it to NBLC, and they kind of. You know, make sort of a record of it, but we had a lot of pictures of what people wrote, and it was just very charming and sweet to see everyone's messages about what they enjoy about the library, so. I'll try to send those out, but we're also going to be posting them on social media and things as well. It was just extremely sweet. In tech services, Mimi Aziz just adjusted the new adult graphics and the young adult collection, so that their monthly, their new stickers match the new stickers that we're using in other areas, we had a different system before, and it's just part of. Standardizing how things look across the collections. And Manny LaCount. Did a lot of work to find some ways to save money on some of the supplies that they are getting in bulk. And that's helping them to kind of stretch their budget for the remainder of the year, which they sort of needed, because they've been doing a lot of free labeling of a lot of collections. And Kim Regan. Well, first I want to say, she just had her one-year anniversary with us. And she helped brainstorm kind of solutions for helping get stickers off of books that need to be removed. Things like new stickers. Often create damage if you're not, you know, if you're just placing it on the book, so they figured out a way to make it happen without ruining the books when they're not doing anymore. The book drop on the second floor has continued to see an increase in use, it's, I mean, instantly popular, couldn't be happier with it. And we've got the new accessible newspaper stands, so they are, you know, chair height accessible. And again, the custodians set those up, and I really want to thank them, we've had a lot of furniture coming in the past year, and they are always really quick to get it together for us. And I also thank you to Robin Flynn for the idea, in the first place, our, our newspaper stands before were enormous and very tall, even for folks not in a chair, right? So this just gets us to be more accessible. And the first round of large print fiction weeding has been completed, they'll be looking at the mysteries soon, and thank you to Sarah Breen, Jeff Arnold, and Jackie Bateman for helping to complete that project. I think it's going to help us figure out how much space we need to kind of make a nicer area for the large print eventually. Erin Basset hosted seven programs for tweens and teens last month, and they've been posting more to social media. And, and looking forward to kind of growing the social media channels by engaging a bit more. Erin was also asked to judge the high school's history day contest, this is the fifth year that she'll be participating. Which is just, again, more collaboration, and we're really excited that she's, you know, becoming part of their community as well. Danielle Tawa has been working on networking the first floor copiers and replacing some printers still, which has been kind of a longer project. And we got an archives intern, which is really exciting, his name is Connor York, he's a Simmons student, and he will be working on processing some map collections with Danielle this spring. And that's already been going really well, they're working well together, and. We're excited to see kind of what we get out of that project, and hopefully it'll be the beginning of, of participating with the archives program at Simmons. On a regular basis, because we certainly have a lot of stuff to go through, and Danielle spends only half her time really working with archives. So that would be really great if this goes well. Danielle's also been cleaning up the active directory on our server, which is a really big job. And the simplest way to explain what that means is that it ensures that our logins and computers are, you know, completely accurate and in use. And it just, it takes a lot of work to do, so it sounds simple, but I just really want to give credit to Danielle for doing that. Danielle's also been working on a number of things related to Microsoft updates that are either killing old programs. Or slowly kind of not providing support for them anymore, so she's been installing Microsoft Edge, a different browser on the public computers. Because Microsoft is discontinuing the use of Internet Explorer. We were able to prevent the, the deployment of, or I guess the elimination of Internet Explorer from a few computers, but not all of them. And it's really just, we're, it's kind of a process for us of letting people know that it's coming, a lot of our users do still look to Internet Explorer, and we want to get them on like Chrome or Firefox, or just something else. But beyond just patron use, we do have some programs that operate through Internet Explorer, or require Internet Explorer to view them, and. You know, in the next year or so, we're going to need those products to adjust, so we'll, we'll be keeping a close eye on that. Tomorrow, I will be speaking at the State House for Library Legislative Day, which is a, something that the Mass Library Association does annually. However, the past few years have been virtual, so this is our first return to in-person, and we have Representative Balzer, who represents Newton. Talking about some work that she's been doing on an ebook bill, which is a really important area of advocacy for everyone to kind of be aware of. I can, I'm happy to talk more about it offline, but it's a really great day to get out there and have our voices heard and advocate for libraries, so I'm really excited about that, if it happens, we'll see. And the children's department held an egg to chicken program on March eighth, where they had live chickens come to visit the library, and we were left with eggs. And the eggs are in an incubator in the children's room, and kids can come up, it's right at their height on a table next to the children's desk, and they can watch them as they're growing inside and talk about how that works, and. Once the eggs are hatched, kids can kind of hold them a little bit, and then within a day or two, they'll be picked up by the farm and taken back, and it's really awesome, we put. Extra blankets around them tonight when we close, just in case power goes out, because I do not feel that PR.
Library kills the chickens.
Yeah, we'll have a custodian tonight, so they know to look out, but I'm so excited about it, and we're investigating whether we could get a camera on it or not. To, so that people could check in, but Danielle, it's kind of working on that, and we've got a few weeks before we would expect any exciting move, right now they're just eggs in a little cart, that's.
Rob?
I was just gonna say, if, if, if it is possible to, to livestream that.
Yeah.
That would be like a social media victory, you know, I, I feel like that would get a lot of people's attention.
Talk to the Needham channel.
May not be feasible, but.
And actually, the Needham channel came and filmed the program, and then. Posted about it, I just saw the link to it today, so it's out there, but yes, that's kind of what we were hoping, like, there's a lot of nature cams, and it'd be fun to kind of emulate that, but again, right now they're just eggs sitting there, so. We have a little bit of time to figure it out, I know Danielle's on it.
And before we go on to the next section, just wanted to check with the trustees, and that was a wonderful list of interesting things happening, anyone have comments, questions about what Kim just went through, Anna? And, say, Anna?
I think Carol was first.
Okay, Carol.
Right, and I, I just wondered, what is the staff program for the staff day? I don't think I know, do I know?
Oh, yeah, so we are having Bernie Lynch come, and he is gonna do, he's a consultant, and he does a lot of like team building kind of activities, so we'll kind of work through some of those things. Some of it is kind of a surprise for our staff, so I'm not gonna go too into depth, but. He does some really fun stuff, so we'll do that, then in the afternoon, we're going to have some time to talk through some scenarios and how we'd like them handled in general, and then. Kind of fifteen, twenty-minute department tours in groups, like small groups, we'll go around and kind of meet with the department head to hear a bit more about what each department does. And just kind of some of the highlights of exciting things they want to share about their department. And then we have a very exciting afternoon activity that is a complete surprise to everyone but two of us, and so you can't know yet.
All right, the, another. Two, two other little things, one, I was just wondering, I was just gonna say that there was a shout-out at the trivia B for the library, and specifically the library of things, I don't know if it's because. Kay had particularly mentioned it, I probably, but Sarge, or Mike, Sarge Riley. Gave a shout-out about that, naming, you know, the tent, and what else do you?
The sewing machine, I, I provided a little list of interesting unusual things that you can now get at the library, and they, yeah, they, they did a nice announcement about that, at, before, or whatever, it was several hundred people, though it was.
Yeah, it was a big.
Good advocacy, yeah, thank you, that's so great.
Yeah, and I was also going to say. I just wondered if you at some point could send trustees a list of what you asked the friends for, I, I know you said that you.
Oh, yes.
Previous meeting, you said that you were, you know, successful, but I don't think we knew what you asked for, at least, I wasn't, I don't think I was aware, anyway, that would be interesting to, to see.
Yeah. We'll write that down.
That's it, Anna.
Anna?
I, I second what Carol asked, but my question, or my comment was, just to compliment you, Kim, on the adding the picture, that visual on your report was really helpful, it just. Drove that point home, you know, so I would encourage you to add visuals as, as often as you think they would really make the message out more powerful.
Yeah.
Any other comments at this juncture, Airheart?
Yeah, I was wondering, do you have, do you have like a, a list of where children's, what schools children's visited in the past month, because I'm pretty sure they visited my kid's school.
They did. Yeah, the Montessori school, yeah.
Yeah, so I just wasn't sure if we were, because I know we've listed those in the past, I wasn't sure if there was. If we knew what other schools, because I know we're trying to hit all of them right now in the community, it'd be good to keep track.
Yeah, they keep track, it's just, it's kind of lengthy for.
I just meant on the public record.
Yeah, yeah. They do definitely track where they're going, and they went to Montessori, I think, a couple times now, actually, in the past few months. Okay, any other comments on that?
My, just one comment that not only did I hear just a wonderful list of programs just now, including the chickens, but also I like all behind-the-scenes work that's going on with updating the technology and the software. Dealing with the, keeping the books sticker-free, and, you know, taking care of the stickers on the book, so just thank you for the multi-layers of work that are being done.
Yeah, staff are doing a great job keeping up with all the different things going on, so really the credit is to them. Okay, so speaking of staff, segue into personnel, we're in the process of scheduling interviews for the two-part-time circulation assistance, we received over sixty applicants, so it's a lot to go through. And, you know, Dimitri's in the process of scheduling those now, and we're also in the process of hiring a part-time reference librarian, and that's to replace Jackie, no, sorry, Lisa, who, as I mentioned last month, is going to be leaving.
Could I ask a question about?
Carol, yeah.
The process of advertising now for our part-time positions, are, we now, we weren't used, weren't allowed to in the past, are we now allowed to say what the schedule is? That they would need to work, since so many people applying for these positions, you know, have to fit themselves this job into other jobs, do we, are we able to do that now, I, I, there was a problem.
Yeah, so since I've been here, that's definitely been, we, we do post what the schedule is.
Yeah, so that's.
Because it.
Otherwise, you know, you'd get, you know, a false idea of how many people are interested, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we post what the schedule is, and we also add some language to say, we appreciate flexibility, we're taking that into consideration, that we'll have other openings, people are sick, people are out. But yeah, we definitely have a definite, sorry, Kim, I didn't interrupt, but yeah, we have a definite schedule, but language that we appreciate whatever flexibility people have.
Okay, so, next is the gift list. Which I have in my report, I don't know if there were any questions about it, or there's a motion.
We need a motion to accept now, I don't think we need to read them out, because they're all in the public documents, so if people have reviewed the gift list, Airheart? Did you have a question, oh, I thought, I saw your handle, okay, yeah, so could we have a motion to accept the gift list?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, by Airheart, okay, all in favor, I will do the roll call, Tom Harkin.
Aye.
Airheart Grave.
Aye.
Jay Fialkov.
Aye.
Bob Pettit.
Aye.
Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Carol Thomas.
Aye.
KK Hill, aye, passed unanimously, okay. So on to building and grounds.
Yes, okay, so we have a boiler tech that has been installing a new boiler pump, which I think is all settled now. Versus when Angel was giving me his report. And last week, this refers to, we had a lot of contractors coming by, they were looking at the rooftop chiller, because that's going out to bid through the building department. And possible replacements options for the future, so. Um, and possible replacements, uh, options for the future, so, um. We did the, so the chiller has been approved as a purchase, um, but it's not controlled by the library. Uh, but it's something we definitely need, so we're very excited that progress is being made there. Um, that's, you know, I don't want to be too optimistic, but hopefully it'll be all set before summer, I don't know, fingers crossed. Um, and they and the custodians installed the new slat walls that were mentioned in the children's room. Um, they've got some projects coming up for the spring, such as painting and doing some kind of masonry repairs, um, some stuff with the flooring, but, you know, nothing too, too huge. Um, they're looking at filter changes for the rooftop unit filters, um, or sorry, the rooftop filters were already changed, and they're looking at where else we need filters changed. Um, and also still kind of talking to buildings about the sink area and reminding them monthly that's something we want done. Um, and the alarms for the staircase, uh, for staircase A and B need to be reworked, so. That's buildings and grounds. Any questions there? Before I move on, okay. Alright, so the financial, yes, the financial report. Um, we had regular spending in state aid for overdriving canopy. Uh, we also finished paying out Colleen Fesco, um. She had an additional charge of a hundred fifty dollars for her preliminary walkthrough, which had not been incorporated into her um. Her invoice that she gave us for the actual work that she had done, so we caught up on that. Um. With normal spending from trust funds, which you have kind of that information as well, so I don't know if anyone had questions on the financial reports that I submitted.
Um, yeah, could we circle back to the, um, uh, the matter of who will pay and who is allowed to pay for, um, the website service each, um, year? I, I see it's no longer on the state aid, so I assume that it's undecided whether it's even allowed, or maybe it wasn't allowed this year, at least.
So we don't have an answer on it yet? I've asked, yeah, um, but we have a vote later about removing it from the state aid because it was paid for by the Friends and, um, Foundation, which I was gonna just mention one day.
But there's no real resolution of the issue, not of whether it can be in future, okay?
Not yet. Um, I am waiting for Dave. So. Um. Any other questions? Okay. So our statistical report, um, circulation was up almost five percent in January from both January twenty-two um, and from December of twenty-two, so the previous month, as well as that month last year. Um. You know, registrations, website hits, computer use, questions asked, all of those numbers were up. Um, there was a larger increase in physical visits to the library in January, um, almost eighteen percent from December. And study room use was up sixteen percent, um, however, program offerings and attendance were down from the previous month with the exception of adult programming, so I'm not really sure what the trend is there, um.